All right, welcome to the July tenth joint meeting between the Chicago City Council and Park and Rec Advisory Board. Kim, will you please do the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Sherman?
Here.
Counselor Lehman?
Here.
Counselor Clay?
Here.
Counselor Whiting?
Here.
Mayor Tauckey?
Here. And do you have the folks with the Park and Rec Board too?
Typically, we haven't done that.
We'll note the role.
Note the role of the Park and Rec Board. Thank you.
And the Planning Commissioner.
And the Planning Commissioner. Welcome, sir. All right, approval of the agenda, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Counselor Whiting?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass unanimously. All right, the purpose of our meeting tonight is to talk about park and rec. Potential items that we want to do with the park board. I need to sit back a little bit.
We'll do some balancing, I think, as we talk, so I think stuff is under.
Perfect. And then we'll pass it, Jamie, is that what you want to do? Perfect. Item three A, overview of recent park and rec issues.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the park board, and Planning Commission. This meeting tonight was really to give the city council members an overview of what the park board's been working on since about February of this year. We kind of took on some different items this year just to see where we wanted to move forward in the future. So the park board began discussion and Ms. Mars and Mr. Hill can speak to this more in depth as to where the park board was coming from and where we were kind of moving as we move into the future as we work on our budget and our plans and that sort of thing. But one of the things we wanted to look at is as we do our CIP every year, we always look at potential projects. And then we look at the developments as they come in to determine what parks are going to be built or what uses. Over the past couple of years, we've been approached by many of our youth associations that they need more field space. As we saw when we built our last two parks, or we built one park and we're in process for next year of building the second park. And then just the growth that we've had, you've seen the growth in the community and just the population alone, we've had the same growth in our associations. And they are affiliated with the city, they do pay a fee to us to be affiliated with the city and therefore get field usage. They also put money into the city facilities as well as the school facilities. So we wanted to just vet out what the needs are, what facilities we have available, what future facilities we may need as we move forward. And that sort of thing. So like I said, the discussion began early in the year. When it began, we looked at what the comp plan had called for to 2030. And it calls for a number of soccer fields, football fields, baseball fields, and even lacrosse fields as lacrosse came on as a youth affiliated association last year. And since 2007 when our comp plan was adopted, we have built two ball fields. Or we have not built two ball fields, but two ball fields have been built. One was the upgrading that the baseball association did with Jackson Township for the Jackson Township field. And then the other one was the ball field that we just constructed at Green Meadows Park that will be in use next year. It's currently being seeded, we're getting turf establishment, so we will get that online next year. So what the park board did to start is they looked at city-owned facilities. What facilities do we have out there where we already have land that we don't have a plan for? In, you know, a solid plan for, we have ideas and they've always bounced off each other, but we've never had an actual proposal come in or a solid plan. And the three parcels that the city owns that we looked at were Shoe Trip Park, Tapa West, which is 10 acres just to the west of Tapa Park, and Seventeenth Avenue Sports Complex. Each year in our CIP, we put together our individual detail sheets of each park. As you can see for Shoe Trip Park, it's in the future unfunded category. When we originally took Shoe Trip Park as a park and we purchased it from the Shoe Trip family, the idea long-term for the city was also to purchase then the next two parcels to the west along that north side of County Road 16. As of today, those two parcels are no longer available. So we have, the park that we have is the biggest size we are most likely going to have at that site. It is a 50 acre site, I believe, or 52 acre site, however, the only usable area of it is 13 acres on the very top. Otherwise, we have a bluff wooded and wetland area of that. So the idea of this park, long-term, when it was taken on by the city council, was to have close to, you know, a 50 acre usable site. That would have been more of like a sports complex was the idea for it or a community park because of the development around it, the school that's in proximity to it. Like I said, that's not going to happen. So we do have that site that we still need to discuss what we were going to do with it. And then the next one was the Tapa West site. If you zoom in on this, here's Tapa Park, this triangle to the west is Tapa West. We had gotten that parcel. When we originally got the parcel, we got it through a grant that just said we're going to use it for ball field, or for, yeah, ball fields. It didn't specify softball fields, baseball fields, turf fields that could use soccer, lacrosse, I mean, ball fields can be taken any, any way that you would like to take them. The idea behind it when writing it was that we would add two more softball fields to add to the softball complex. Then the baseball association began discussions with the city back in 2001 about making that area into two baseball fields. So, actually, I'll go back one second. Here is the overall 52 acres of Shoe Trip Park. So as you can see, this is the 13 acres that's usable, then we have a steep bluff, and this is all wetland down here on Dean Lake. Going back to Tapa West. In 2001, the baseball association worked with the city to put this schematic together. This was before we redeveloped Tapa Park, so it is a little bit different, we still have a ball field here, we don't have this extra parking. And then this parking lot was extended here, so we don't have this ball field. So we still have eight ball fields out there in the regular complex, and then this parking lot is in place. So two baseball fields would fit, two turf fields would also fit, another schematic that was put together is our football schematic because our football association uses Tapa Park. But as you can see, two full-size football fields can also fit in that spot. So this is what it actually looks like as far as the underlying with there. So it's 10 acres, highly sought after by the baseball association for more baseball fields. But it was also the one site that the football association had come to us for about lighting because they conduct all their football association games out here currently. Under the lights on one, two, and three are one field, and then four is another field. So they want lit fields. And then the third was the site that we looked at was the lighting of the two fields at the Seventeenth Avenue Sports Complex, Field One and Two. As council moved a few meetings ago to install the lights, that's what came out of the park board from this discussion, was to get the lights on Fields One and Two as was planned when we developed the site that is moving forward. The lights are planned to be installed by August first. So we can not talk, there's no future, talk about any more lights at the sports complex, so that one has actually been moved forward with, so. And then the last site that the park board brought up that the city doesn't own, but with discussions with the school district, is a possible joint project between the city and the school district, is this corner of Spencer and County Road 79, I believe? Yes. So this is Seventeenth Avenue, and this is Spencer, 79 is the same road. It's about 10 or 11 acres on that corner. The idea from the school district was to use it for an elementary site. They've now moved Jackson Elementary down to the west, so the elementary school would not go there. They've talked about multiple different uses for it, they don't have a specific plan for it yet either. Possible football stadium, that sort of thing. But in discussions with the activities director at the school district and the superintendent, it's a very good joint project that they're willing to work on and move forward with the discussion of what we could put there, what the uses would be, who would pay for what, that sort of thing. So this is the other site that we think turf, grass turf fields is a good site for. So in your packet, I put a little bit of description about each park as I just described. And then we also put together some pros and cons as we moved through our work session and that sort of thing with the park board. Each one have their pros and cons. Shoe Trip, the biggest pro is that it's the, it's got no infrastructure to it. I think we do have now the piping in the road underneath 21 for future water and sewer, but we don't have any services to it. It's undeveloped, it can only fit two full-size fields of whether it's baseball. We have little aerials of it here. We can fit two full-size baseball fields, two grass turf fields. One area with this site is we have to put off-street parking because there is no parking on County Road 16 or 21. So you'd have to include a parking lot in there, and then we do have in this a little play area. And then it can out, I do have another aerial if you want to see it, but it has a baseball field and a turf field, so it can fit two fields, basically, two playing fields. Tapa West is that it's already adjacent to the current Tapa Park. Majority of football is played out there, tournaments are played out there for both softball and baseball. It's close to the baseball stadium where we have baseball games that we could work with. It can fit two turf fields or two baseball fields. We, one thing with putting baseball fields there and the baseball association's request is that they would require a fully fenced field, so using the outfield for football is not something that would work in this case for the fields, the type of baseball fields that are needed with the growth that they have. So combining and doing like we do now with fields two and three at Tapa wouldn't work because of that fence that went the way around. But the one issue there is it would take, football is concerned with the, that the overflow parking lot is not large enough if we were to put lit fields there. Also during, if you've been down there, a few weeks ago, our Lions Club had their tournament, they have an 89 to 90 some team tournament every year, and they use the Tapa West area right now as their overflow parking lot. And it's packed Friday night and all day Saturday. So one thing, it would hinder overflow parking if we were to develop it, but that's something that we would have to work on with the groups that have the tournaments there. The sports complex we already talked about. So then, and then artificial turf was something that had been brought up. But it, looking at it in the minimal research that we did, it's extremely expensive. And we can go into that if you have some more questions, I have some more items that we found on that. But we did allow the outdoor youth facility groups to come in and do a presentation to the park board on March 26th to tell us what are their needs, what are their current numbers, what are their future growth projections, what are their current field usage? What do they see that their needs are? What are they willing to give to help develop some of these sites? We went with the outdoor groups right now because we were looking at these outdoor park facilities that we currently own. If we want to, as we move forward, we would also look at our indoor facility groups. However, the only group that we have a lot of control over is hockey. With the second sheet of putting that in, the other indoor groups mainly use school facilities. So they do use the community center gyms here and there, but usually they get a new gym or new facility whenever a new school is built. So that's usually what satisfies our indoor groups. So looking at our outdoor groups, just in summary, the football, basically, they need two lit fields. Their growth has doubled since 2009 because they've taken on first grade and then they took on the middle school, seventh and eighth grade. As you heard or may have seen in the papers this last year, the middle school was talking about possibly giving up more of their sports to the youth associations. They've chosen to retain those sports for now, but in the future, that may become something that our youth associations take on more of. So lit fields because of their traveling, they play at night, they play in the fall when it gets darker sooner, so that's their biggest need. Baseball, you have seen their need from last year, the park development where they need the longer bases, the 13, 14, or 12, 13-year-old fields, grass infield, pitching mound. Right now, we have the one at Green Meadows, the one at Jackson, and then they make do with the one at Saks, which is not a city-owned one. And the rest are all skinned in fields that we use. Soccer needs additional fields, if you go out to the sports complex, you can see it's packed most days. And they just, they use it from April through October, November, and it just gets a lot of use, so any new fields? We've had to actually close down, this is the first year we did not close a field down for them in the last three years, but they've had to find one field at a school facility or a school site in 2011 and 10 because our fields get so much wear and tear, we had to close down one of our main fields just to give it time to regrow because we were not being able to keep up with keeping turf on it and not, for the safety purposes, so. With the lighting of the two fields, that is a scheduling thing that will come through our office and will only be used for football in the fall. Soccer will not use those fields, so we'll try to minimize that wear and tear even by putting those lights on there, we won't schedule it for outside groups. Tennis, we will talk about a little bit more in depth in the future item. But they had a unique proposal to possibly use Shoe Trip Park for an indoor eight facility tennis court facility. And their desired location is Shoe Trip Park because of its location on 2116, proximity to 169, and the major outlying metro area. So we'll talk about that more in depth. And Ms. Mars and Mr. Hill can talk about where we've directed them thus far and answer any questions. And then lacrosse, they're brand new to the city as affiliated sports associations the last two years. They, we put fields for them wherever we can fit them, they're very large fields, so any of the turf fields that we've laid out on any of these plans will fit lacrosse, soccer, and football. But lacrosse has large fields and they have different fields for the boys and the girls, so they have to play in different facilities. We've been able to get them two fields, three fields now in locations wherever we can fit them, but accessibility has been an issue for the lacrosse fields and then just in their growth. They have, I think, 100 kids at this point. They started a youth program this summer, we'll get the numbers from that as they begin it here in the next few weeks. And then as they grow and once they become a varsity sport at the high school, then hopefully their youth association will even grow in that respect. So that's an up and coming sport. And then softball, to do their presentation, they were possibly looking at city doing some partnering with them and the school district to light two fields, the two soft, two of the three softball fields on beerling. They are actually moving forward with the school, with no assistance from the city at this point, to light at least one of them. And then when they light the second one, we may be, have that discussion with them, or they, the school may move forward with, I know the school budgeted for it, so they are moving forward with lighting for sure one, I think actually they might be lighting the two this year, so.
Them are the ones by the track?
Yes. Yep. So I had showed you what was laid out already. Then what came out of this, basically from the park board, after we did a work session, on April 16th, we did a work session and talked about all these presentations by the associations, and what was top priority? What do we want to put on our CIP for future development? What do we want to work with? Their first, the easiest development that we could do that would be for the biggest need, which was the lit fields, was the sports complex, which they made the recommendation to move forward with, the city council approved, and we are moving forward with that. So the number one bullet is off and in the process. And then the next was that Tapa Park would be the next development to put two ball fields there. However, and I didn't put it in there when I apologize, but their contingency was that the third bullet where they directed the staff to continue working with the school district to develop that school site, was that if that, right now, Tapa would be allocated for baseball in concept. But if the school district and the city did not work on that joint development of that site in the future or have the idea that we were going to, and that was off the table, then the park board would relook at the use of Tapa Park to make sure that baseball was the best use there and not the turf fields. So in concept, right now, it's two baseball fields, but it's contingent upon whether or not we can work jointly with the school district for the school site.
Two baseball fields at?
At Tapa West.
But you can still do other things on top of them as a drawing that you had?
No, we, we had, that was a schematic that was put together just to show, we could if we didn't put fence around here, you could put a football field here, and you could put a football field here. However, the fields at the baseball association is in need of, need to be fully fenced. So this would not be a possibility if we put two baseball fields there. But the site is big enough that we can put two turf fields or two baseball fields, but we would not be able to use it for everything.
So if the school site was to put some diamonds on it, then you could go to this plan? Or is that, is that the plan?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
The idea with the school site right now, with the park board's discussion, is to see if we could possibly put three turf fields there, grass turf, that then could accommodate both the soccer, football, and lacrosse. And then possibly light two of those fields.
Little league could play there too.
Yeah, if we put a backstop in it, in a skinned infield, where they probably could play there.
Okay.
That's not necessarily their need at this point.
All right. At what point can we ask a couple of questions that we've written down?
We can open up this part for discussion with park board. The next part is the, sure, the next part is parcel 75, so.
All right.
For the tennis.
All right. Counselor Lehman?
Are we still using the Pearson-Sweeney, the old junior high and the community center fields for the little guys' ball?
Yes.
Okay. So the need really isn't that because they're pretty easy.
Yep.
It's a grass area, backstop. Okay, so we're really looking at the bigger fields.
Yes, we're looking at that 12, 13 age group with the infield, 75-foot bases and mound.
And when you say skin, that means it's got the gravel?
When a skinned infield is all gravel, yep. Yep.
Okay.
And that's typically what we build at new schools.
And then the Seventeenth and Spencer School site? If they put diamonds there, or if a joint thing to put diamonds there, then we could use the Tapa for the other type of fields. And if they don't put the diamonds there, then we can use the school site maybe for the other type of fields and then put the diamonds on Tapa, correct?
Yes, the park board's direction right now was to out, to plan on putting the ball fields at Tapa and to put the turf fields at the school site.
Okay.
If the school site would not work for the turf fields, then they would. If the school site would not work for the turf fields, then they would.
Try to slip them.
Yeah, they would try to flip them or determine what is the biggest need that we work on Tapa because the school site may not be even an option.
And then what's the size of the fields on Veerling by the track? The softball is looking at using?
I don't, those are full sized softball fields and they already use them. So, they're just gonna, they were giving money to light them so they can play double headers. Right now, they only play a single game.
So, they're gonna use it full time? There's no way that any, anybody else can use them fields?
Well, the fields by Veerling right now are used by the high school first.
Okay.
And then they're, and then they're allowed to use during the regular season by travel softball.
Okay.
Once that is over, the in-house softball gets some use.
Maybe I'm not asking if they can be used on, maybe I should be asking what's the best use on that field? What kind of field is it? Is it a full sized field?
They're specifically softball fields and those are controlled by the school district, so we actually don't have any control over.
Right. Well, we still get use rights on them, but what's the layout between the bases and how far stuff?
That I can't answer right now, but I can find out for softball, that's specific to a softball, girl softball.
Can't really use them for baseball?
No, no.
All right.
Council lady.
At Tapa here, if, in your picture, if you went with the two baseball fields, is there a available space for future parking needs? Or is that not, not a possibility?
Um, possibly in an old, what's my other schematic?
Put ramp in there.
Oh, here. Um, this was a drawing that was in two thousand and one and like I said, it's a little bit different, but this parking lot is essentially the same. There potentially could be extra parking here. This says, community garden was in that concept back in two thousand and one. Um, we would definitely have to look at the drainage, the, there's a pond here that would, would be in place. So, there, there'd have to be some engineering done in this to see, but it's large enough that I think there's a potential for added parking. If you put two turf fields there, it would be fairly tight to get any additional parking. Let me grab my layout of that.
Yeah, that one small, that one field looks a lot smaller, is that?
Yes, th, um, this one, in this concept plan, the big one was supposed to be the same size as our stadium. So, we'd have another stadium sized field and then this was that twelve, thirteen year old field, um, that they're in need of. So, you could reduce this down to two, it's just to show that you can fit the two.
Okay. Council lady.
Wasn't there a football field played on, on this one right on here?
Mm-hmm, yes, there is.
And then?
Oh, yes, there's a football field right here.
Okay, and then sometimes there's a bunch of parking that have it down there, down, right down.
Right on County Road fifteen, yeah.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, which I believe the county is going to be doing something up here to try to stop that.
But if we, but if we replace that field somewhere else, then we might be able to use that area for parking where that football field is? It's not a very good location, but.
Well, we have to build a road to it. Right now, there's just the trail that comes back to it. So, we don't have any access. They park up on the hill here. They don't actually park down.
Yeah, when I was up there, they were parking on the grass.
Yep, they park along County Road fifteen, but there's a steep hill that goes down to the field.
Yep.
And so, to drive and use this as parking in the future, you'd have to drive a road. There's only that trail there.
Right.
But we do use that football field for football and then we use it as an overflow for soccer as well. And that's lit, that's a lit field.
Council chairman.
Um, is there estimated timing on working with the school district on developing a plan? Like, what does that look like in terms of timing? Is it this year? Is it the next three years?
Um, we'd like to, we've already begun some preliminary discussions just to see if they would be interested. Um, and then the last I heard from the school district was they were going to work on how, how do we put the proposal together? Should, um, the activities director and myself work on the numbers and then present it to the city council and the school board? Or there's, the facility, or the school district has now a facilities task force. But the superintendent was gonna feel out if they should take it to them first. So, I'm just waiting from the school district, but we wanted to try to move on it as soon as, as we can, so getting it started this year.
Okay. Councilor Clay.
I'm, I'm sensing a growing competition between the various sports groups vying for turf or land for space to play on. How, do we have a, have we thought of developing some sort of policy or plan as to how to weigh one group's request against the other? I mean, the obvious one is how much money do they bring to the table of their, of their own to help finance these developments of, of additional parks? But, uh, the other thing too is it, and, and a number of, a couple of spots that we were talking about how the participation in various, uh, soccer, tennis, or baseball, or footballs has been growing over the past number of years and it's saying because of growth in the community, but we haven't had that much growth in the community. But I am noticing that they're adding, like football has added first grade and seventh and eighth grade. Has anybody talked to these groups about whether it's wise to be adding programming when we don't have the actual physical space for them to play on?
Yes, um, to answer both your questions, the second question first, we have talked to them, especially when football took on, is basically saying that you have only the facilities that are available to you, so it's up to them to be creative in how they schedule. We do, we allocate the fields and give each association X number of fields these days, these times. And then it's up to them to set their schedule for the times that they have allotted. So, the more they add, the less playing time each of the kids in the association is gonna get if they choose to add more. Um, they know they can't expect the city to keep building fields without some assistance from these groups if they're gonna keep adding. Um, that's why we started to look at our current parkland that's vacant right now and not purchasing further land or anything like that. Um, to answer your other question, in allocating, we do have a system in place for our outdoor facilities as well as our indoor and it's based really on their numbers. So, um, we have, we lay out, Sherry has a very large sheet that she lays out every single baseball, softball, multipurpose ball field, um, and then we allocate, or we have which nights they're available. And we pretty much have use of them seven days a week from April through when school starts, September. Um, what we do then is we take the numbers, so baseball, let's say baseball has six hundred kids, softball has four hundred kids. Um, and then it's a ratio on, based on their, their numbers, we give them the ratio of field usage. So, baseball would get then sixty percent of the field usage time, softball gets forty percent. And we can flip flop fields, so I know that at Westminster, softball gets one field, two nights a week. Baseball gets the other field, those two nights a week, and then I believe baseball gets both fields the other two nights a week. And then, so all we do is give them the fields. We say, here is your field usage, you schedule your teams accordingly. We don't actually schedule their teams.
Well, i- if we're using that system, so how many children do you have in your program? As far as how we're basing or divvying out field time? Then, a group that adds more programming gets more kids in the program, which gives them an advantage on field space. So, there's, there's no incentive for them to not keep adding programs.
Well.
Which we can't support. Or am I overthinking this?
Um, I, a little bit. We, we allocate to a certain point. We, we know the number of fields we have. Uh, we know what the needs are as far as usage for each field. Um, we allocate per their numbers, but we also make sure that the other group has the adequate, so with baseball, softball. We make sure that softball has the adequate number of fields that they need. And then, if they, if they haven't used fields in the past or they're not gonna use a certain field, they have to a certain date to get us their schedules. And then we can give baseball more if they've added numbers. So, we also go off of last year's and what we've allocated to them last year and move forward and try to give them one or two fields extra if they've added X number of kids, if it's available, um.
It, it, it sounds like a complicated system, but I'm wondering if it wouldn't help to make it just a tad more complicated and, and say, this is the allocation based on the number of kids involved, you know, the ratios between the different groups today. If you add more programming and more kids into the program, that doesn't necessarily directly then give you a pro rated increase in, in field time, but it's gonna be fifty percent of that because we're, we're basing it off of July two thousand and twelve participation numbers until we get more field space developed, at which point we'll modify that again.
Hmm.
Just as a sort of disincentive for them to keep expanding programs that we, that we can't serve.
Right.
Or have, or, I mean, it sounds like we're pretty much right at the limit of what we can do for the, right now. And if our funding for, and then I'll stop talking.
Yeah.
I believe it when I see it.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, if our funding continues to be only through our, our new subdivision developments through, you know, the park dedication fees to, to fund these things, you know, until we actually start getting some serious development going again, we may need to tell these groups, you know, you need to start limiting your, you know, the expansion of your programs because there's just no place for them to play anymore. And, and unless I'm wrong and people think we could, you know, float a, a bond referendum to build a bunch more park, park space, which I kind of doubt, and immediately he rose his hand.
Not related to that.
Oh, okay.
Jamie, do you have anything to say that, that very short monologue?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, one thing that the, the associations know is many of the associations wanna play Monday through Thursday and that's, you know, because weekends, people travel and this and that. I know these, many of the associations have started to go to Saturday morning programming, um, because of their reduced field space during the week because of the growth. Um, the associations know that they have to start scheduling Friday nights and maybe Saturday afternoons, so that's an option for them as well. Like, we give them, we allocate those times to them and if they don't use them, we keep track of that because then we know how much more space that they can use. Um, the other thing is I know baseball started going to some double headers. They start a little earlier than they used to, so they can fit in two games. Softball needs to start doing that as well and they became aware of that last year and I, I believe they are possibly gonna do that too. So, the associations can be a little bit more creative too with how they schedule. Um, so there is a little bit of wiggle room where if we didn't build these two fields tomorrow, you know, it's not gonna be that detrimental. We're just looking at the future and how to best use the park land that we have.
And as well, doesn't the, uh, lighting the fields give us significant more capacity than we had before?
Yes, it does, yep.
So, it's a, not a cheap option, but it's cheaper than building new fields and getting new land and it gives a lot more ability, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh.
I guess the other thing is I don't think we're quite near capacity like Mr. Clay is saying, but I think the, eventually, once we get to that point, the associations will end up having to figure out what they can limit and what they will limit and it's just a matter of what's available.
Yep.
And kinda like we said, they're starting to go to Saturdays and everything else and if, we're nowhere near, I don't think, our limit yet. To be concerned with that quite yet. Unless you wanna just limit yourself to Monday through Thursday only, then yes, we're at our limits. But there's other times that are available and it's gonna become like hockey. They play ten o'clock at night or whatever, whenever ice time's available and that's what they're gonna start doing.
Council lady.
You know, I, how many different types of fields do we have? It seems like, you know, it's, you can't have one sized baseball field that fits all the different uses, I understand that. But we've got a lot of different kind of fields. We got the soccer fields, we got the football fields, we got the, how many different kinds of baseball fields? And how many do we have for baseball, different kinds?
Of different kinds of fields, we have three different kinds of fields. So, we have the skinned infield like we build at all of the elementary schools, um, which is, I'm sorry, I lied, we have, I'll go through them. We have the skinned infield, um, then we have, um, the, the biggest one, which is the stadium. And we are, have use of the two high school fields, so we have three of that size. Um, then of the ele, twelve, thirteen year old, we have the, the two fields that, one that we just built and then Jackson that we get use of. Um, and then we have an intermediate field and I'm forgetting which age group it's for right now. Um, I don't know if you can add, but Riverview is a different sized field.
And then we have, you know, the little league ball stuff that you'd have at like Hiawatha Park or.
Right, we have the basic T-ball, yep, our rec programs, mm-hmm.
You know, I, I'm thinking, is there a way that we can com- combine this into certain sizes? Like this size, this size, and this size? And if, if the little kids had to play on too big of a field, which we have when I was coaching the little league, they don't care. They just wanna hit the ball and run, you know? Um, but then I can see where you have to have the certain size fields for, you know, competitive stuff. But we just seem to have a whole myriad of fields and there's no consistency to the sizes and what, who wants to play on and what they can be used for in different locations. So, at some point, I'd like to try to figure out how we set a standard and, uh, you know, so when we build somewhere, we don't have such a conglomerate of different sizes.
Is that possible?
I think so. One of the things we've al, we've recently done with the park development that we have is it's always just been the multipurpose skinned infield. Westminster, we put into, um, we just put in more, I forget, I'm drawing a main blank now, and then the schools all put in the same size. So, it's now coming to light that, yeah, we can use those and they're getting by them, but as they get to that more competitive where they actually need to get on a mound and start, you know, playing that way is becoming, is coming to light. So, when we do our park planning process, we need to look at our ratios. And one thing we, the, the baseball association is open for is putting money towards possibly retrofitting some of our skinned infield if we can. We've, when we looked at Green Meadows Park and not putting two ball fields there and only putting one, and we looked at other places to do it. And we looked at, um, Tapa West was one, but then retrofitting that, one of them at Westminster, both of them at Westminster. But the, we're finding that our space is limited because we have Seventeenth Avenue right there, so we can't get the distance that we need. So, I think it, it will come in with planning and doing an inventory of what we have and maybe there is one that we didn't, haven't actually seen that we can retrofit. Or I know the, the three at Moncho, we could retrofit one of those, but it would be the one closest to the community center. So, it would take a lot of work to extend the berm on the side, the hill to build it out, to get the fence radius. But it's possible and it may be cheaper than building a whole new field, so.
You know, it, it just, sometimes it sounds like they're picky on what fields they're getting, you know? And we had a this, this, or this, this is what we have to offer.
Mm-hmm.
If you don't like it, I mean, it's too bad.
Mm-hmm.
Council lady.
We talked about the capacity and all, all the uses. What, what's the impact on these fields? Is it costing the city more to maintain them, to, uh, park, or just the parks to maintain them and keep them in shape so everybody can use them?
Yeah, the more usage on a field, the more fields we build. Definitely is, is an impact on our parks department. Um, Bruce can talk to how, when's the last time we've added anybody in our parks department? It's been.
Well, I mean, on the usage, I mean, just what we have, not building out a new one, but the actual impact from all the use that we have.
Well, yeah. For instance, the, the soccer fields at the sports complex, like I said, we've had to close a field the last two years because we can't, we just, our guys have worked on it, worked on it, worked on it to seed it, to sod it, to irrigate it. Um, it does take a lot of care on the parks department's, um, time to, the more use on a field, the harder it is to keep that work up. And they, they spend a lot of time just the seeding and the sodding. So, the more use, yes, it's gonna take more time to try to keep them up to snuff or we have to close them and then we have to move them elsewhere. But then the constant lining, so the parks department lines all of our fields. Um, we could use more of the soccer fields as multipurpose, but then they have to put the lines on for soccer, for lacrosse, which has two different lines, for football. Um, and to line a field, we have one guy that lines and he's really good at it, but to line a, all those fields that often is his whole, I mean, that's all he does, is line fields, so.
Different colored chalks.
Yeah.
Council chairman.
I was just gonna say one other thing about the skinned fields that if, again, if you get creative, there are ways that, like for nine to ten to eleven year olds, if you wanted them to start mound pitching, you can build like a portable mound and roll it out and they can, you can use it that way too, so.
Yep.
There's creative things that you can do.
Yep, and I do, do believe the, two of the fields at Moncho have the portable mound that they do bring in for those younger groups now.
So, they're pretty usable, skin even.
Yep.
They do, I, from my time on park board, they do a really good job of using everything as much as we possibly can. And that's just gonna get more difficult as we move forward. Mark and Corky, what do you guys have to say?
Fatters up.
Fatters up.
Um.
I don't know, um.
Was there anything in the discussion that you guys talked about that we haven't hit on yet that was a big issue in your meetings or?
I really think Jamie covered quite a bit of what we discussed. Um, that's how we came up with the conclusions that we came up with, was listening to the associations and their needs. And what direction the city should go to, to get the needs that we can afford first and move forward.
I think it all hinges on the workings with the schools. I think if we can get multi-athletic use purposes out of those fields, where we can cover three associations, that's gonna be the key. If we can cover lacrosse, soccer, and football, and and get lights there too, to extend the season, or the the days and how long they can play. That's gonna be the most important.
Okay. That's Clay.
Getting back to my previous point, um, about competition between the different groups. I I'm still wondering if if the park board members or staff is is feeling any increased pressure from them. And we talked about having a, you know, a policy and and plan in places to how these things get divvied out. And maybe it's, you're not feeling that much pressure yet, but I have a suspicion that that you're gonna be feeling more and more. And I would encourage you, you know, once that happens, if it does. To to bring it to, you know, to get that policy and, you know, type it up and and bring it to council for us to debate and then approve it. So that then you can, you know, throw it on our shoulders and say, this is, this is the council's policy which we have to follow.
Yep.
So, you know, they can do all the yelling and screaming they want at you guys, but it's not gonna do any good, they're gonna have to yell and scream at him.
Definitely ain't gonna do any good.
So field allocation policy.
Yeah, you know, it just, if it if it gets to the point where you're you're feeling more pressure than you care to deal with, you know. Feel free to, you know, bring it back to us as a a council policy.
It's probably something they should start start thinking about and working on at some point.
One benefit that we have so far with the football, soccer, and lacrosse. Um, and even though they all have needs, their seasons don't overlap all that much. So lacrosse is more of a spring sport right now. As they grow, it will get more competition in the summer because their youth groups will be in the summer. Um, but soccer is, their main is the summer, they do have some in the spring and some in the fall. But it's not enough where they dominate all of our soccer fields like they do in the summer, and then football's that fall sport. So right now, they all fall fairly in their own.
They short overlap.
They short overlap, and we're able to maintain that, but as they grow, yes, there will be more com- competition. Cause they'll start their seasons earlier, or go longer, or have youth, different youth ones.
That's Lemon.
Can we get a brief overview from the park board members on the uh indoor tennis facility?
We'll get there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's coming up, right? Okay, um, okay, I've got a couple of questions, um, with. First off, this is a statement which I think that um having this discussion is great. And having us together is not overly necessary, in my opinion, because we'll listen to you guys. And and if you say that this is supposed to have two baseball fields, unless there's something that's majorly wrong with that. I think as a council, we will listen and trust that you guys have listened to all of the um associations and know what's going on. Unless there's some major reason that there's an issue um from there. Not to say we're not gonna disagree upon occasion, but um I think it's really important to know that we trust you and believe what the park board is doing. Um, as the best of everybody's interest. Um, so a couple of questions I have about just the discussion with things. Um, first is, did you talk about future parkland at all, and what we can do to fund future parkland? And if park board thinks it's important to, as Council Clay alluded to earlier, to go beyond. Just waiting for developments to happen, since we've got so many kids coming into the system and our, everything is growing? Or do we wanna grow that parkland, or do we wanna say, so sorry, you can only have five hundred kids in your association?
At this point, we have not talked about any future parkland that the city doesn't own yet. We've started with just what we own to yet, that is yet to be developed.
Okay. What do other people in council think that with land? Cheaper now than it will be when development really starts to come back, is it worth looking at? Cause we have the twenty thirty plan with specified areas for parkland, is it worth looking at that for purchasing future parkland now? Or does that not make any sense?
Well, from a, from a real estate perspective, it's really starting to look like the. We're hitting the bottom of the current real estate market, so. I I don't see prices dropping much more, if any, anytime soon, and we'll probably start reversing and increasing again.
Hopefully.
Yeah, um. If we're serious about purchasing land for for that, it's now would be an opportune time to just move price points.
That's why I'm asking the question, yeah. That's Lemon.
Boy, I think the first step would probably throw to, throw together an inventory on all of our landholding, where they're located. Get out our map of what we're thinking for the future twenty thirty, and where they should be located, and then sit down with the school district, find out what their plan is, where their schools are gonna be placed. And see if somehow, when they're spotting sites, if we couldn't spot a site with them. Because it seems like we're doing a lot of this together.
Mhm.
And uh, it seems like we haven't really done that a lot in the past, and it might be a missed opportunity.
You mean joining with the school district on purchasing land?
Well, let's say they know, yeah, let's say th- they know they're gonna put a future school site here on thirty acres or something.
Mhm.
Do we say, don't get thirty, but get fifty, we want twenty next door?
Well, we've got that opportunity coming up in the next.
You know.
Soon.
Six to twelve months?
You know. And you don't, I I don't know if that's the right approach, but it's an approach that we haven't taken, that we should probably have a discussion on.
That's Sherman.
Well, I guess the other question I have, because I wasn't on the council when we were in the boom of development. My my question would be, how do the developers in residential area participate in the acquisition of land for parks? I don't know how that works. Um, is that part of their, is that part of the process?
State statute, ten percent, that, well, back then, it was ten percent.
Right, I know that we get money, but are we actually getting land?
Or land.
It could be both, either a a park dedication of land within that plot that's being developed.
Or both.
Okay.
Mhm.
Or a cash.
Or a combination of both.
Combination of both.
Right.
Traditionally.
So that's our choice.
I'm not sure what the new economies uh dollars are on it, but it was never enough. You could either get the land, or you could develop land that you had, but it wasn't enough to do them both. I don't know if we've done anything since land values have come down to, you know, what is now the new norm.
Okay.
Like with Valley, Valley Creek Crossing, the new one, um, when it was going through the process of plating and all that. We chose to take cash and the lands, they're they're paying their park dedication as opposed to giving land for their park dedication.
Right.
Other developments, we took the land and later came back and put the assets on top of the land.
Yep.
The other, Mayor, the other uh change of heart that I've had in the last couple of years.
Say it ain't so.
Would be, since the county's investing so much money into passive recreational uses. We should probably step back from that and look more at the active uses, since the county's doing the passive uses. But to a pretty big extent, too. So it's a kind of a duplication if we're gonna compete with them on passive use.
Passive use being?
Uh, well, what are they building now, they've got the, three different parks, they're building a big trail all the way down to uh south. What's that one there, Regional Trail, uh Blakely?
Blakely Bluff.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, you know, they're they're spending a lot of dollars on a passive type recreational uses, whether it's Cleary Lake Park or uh. The Blakely Trail System, um, they're doing quite a bit in a passive side.
The way I ride a bike is not passive, even though I don't go very fast.
I'm I'm not saying we shouldn't have a trail network. You know, art, matter of fact, our trail network could could lead to theirs and hook up with theirs and make a larger network, which which is our plan already.
Absolutely should, yeah.
But uh, I think pretty much if you're gonna look for a passive type uses, you can go to the, not only Scott County, but Carver County, or Hennepin County, or any of the counties. And they've got their listing of all their, kinda like the state DNR with their William O'Brien State Park, uh St. Croix. We've got all their passive type use parks, with some amenities in it, the canoeing and stuff like that. But that's really more of a county-state type initiative, not necessarily local level.
I agree to a certain point, um, but we don't have a whole lot in the works right now of passive stuff, except for Shutrup.
No. Right.
What can't be used.
Yep.
And I think there's also a good case to be made for preserving some of the, like, as we continue to grow the bluffs and those kinda things. I think it's important to preserve that as park areas, to preserve that natural landform that we've got.
Slightly, might be a different way of doing that without taking the bluff area that you wanna preserve as parkland. Where you could be taking either good land for parkland, or you could be taking the money to develop some of these parks. You might be able to work on a conservation type easement for, you know, your tree preservation, or whatever the case might be instead.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah, we agree. How about that? That's Clay.
Another quick comment, real estate speaking wise, um. We used to look for farmland to buy to develop for parks, but with corn at, you know, six to six eighty a bushel. It's become, it's very, it's the price for farmland has been shooting up the last year or so, quite significantly. If we're out there just looking around for land to buy, we might wanna focus more on some of the more marginal pieces of property that aren't particularly good for farming. And and may require more infrastructure or or mitigation or improvements, you know, on, once it's purchased and to make it into a turf facility. You know, something with limestone or rock or. Or, you know, something like that, that's, so it's it's less farmable and more, but not really as well suited also for homes. Especially with lime rock, it's tough to put in sewer and water, but um.
I know a perfect spot, Shakopee gravel.
Yeah?
As it comes around.
You know, the other opportunity, maybe, that we're pursuing would be. You've got the excess mendot properties, you've got the uh Met Council properties. Yes, there's easements underneath these properties, but putting a ball diamond or football field over top of it. They ever need access, it's pretty minimal exposure to tear up some ground and put some ground down and throw some seed down, and you're back to where you started. It's not like you're taking up major infrastructure to get at their easement.
Where do we have any of those?
Um, right across one sixty-nine, and the other side at sixty-nine on the east.
There's also parcel thirty-seven forty-two, which there's been discussion as far as acquiring that. Uh, south of west of Shakopee Town Square, we know that that's probably gonna be something that we're gonna have to hold for a while. But that might be an interim use, as long as it's, you know, minimal source of field improvements.
Yep, yeah, there's infrastructure issues up there in the future, and there's annexation issues and.
Right. So from, I'm sorry.
Nice talk.
Um, couple of comments, um, I like the idea of keeping the ballfields and at top, uh, cause of the fact that. Uh, you mentioned the Lions Tournament, um, expanding on the tournaments and things can bring a lot of people to town. And I met a few that were here from Red Wing at a tournament, and uh it's, it just adds to uh people coming to visit our town. I think that's a great idea. I don't not necessarily agree with the passive ideas. I think we've got some great opportunity with some of the properties, especially at at Shutrup and uh the the parcel seventy-five over there. I think that that has some great passive uses out there. So I like what you, I like what you propose, and 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 to echo what the mayor had said, uh, we we trust you guys, so. And thanks for all the work you guys do, so we appreciate it.
Yeah.
I only one comment that I have is on the school property. If you guys are looking at lighting that, I'd be a little concerned in taking consideration the houses that are around there. You know, that wasn't there when they built, and putting lights there could be pretty disruptive to their family life there. So I'd be kinda concerned about that when you're looking at putting lights in that particular spot. The rest of them are pretty much isolated, so I don't see a problem with that part, but that piece of parcel could be an issue putting lights on.
That lighting is so good now, though, especially with what they proposed, that field's one and two, how it's directed to the fields.
Very directed.
And if it's for.
There's not much spill.
And if it's for kids, they're gonna be done by, hopefully by nine o'clock and.
Right, and that's what I've heard comments about, the gentleman that was at the meeting about the lights, I saw him again over the weekend, and I don't think he had understood. But he kinda was thinking soccer was gonna be going on as well during the summer, and I was like, it's mainly gonna be football, and we're done by eight or eight thirty.
So they just gotta program that to shut off when the thing is done.
Right.
And not burn them all night long.
Yep, and they are on timers, we set, we can set them remotely even.
Okay.
And any development.
Can we pay a little coin operated deals or?
But any development that we would do would also go through the park planning process, which we'll talk about in just a bit too. Where we would have neighborhood meetings before we would put anything up to get their feedback and and see what the impact would be. We had neighborhood invited to the two fields, we lit at the sports complex, even those those were planned, and we had one resident show.
It's so seldom that neighbors complain when we're developing a park.
It's never happened. The other thing that I wanted to ask about was, we've talked about most of the sports, um. And the, like, ba- uh, basketball and volleyball have school facilities that they can use, but we haven't talked about hockey at all. That has city facilities that we use, and I'm sorry to have to bring it up, but I I have a hard time putting a lot of money into. Other sports myself, as in more soccer fields and more football fields, um, because they definitely have a need. And are a lot cheaper than building a second sheet of ice, but their needs of the kids in hockey is also really great. And I don't wanna move forward with the discussion without addressing that at all, so then see what other people think we do about that. That's Sherman.
I think the dilemma is that fields that are outside, families and other people can use when they're not in use. And even in the winter, to go out in snowshoe and, you know, drag a kid around in a sleigh, which is different than a hockey rink. That's all. I mean, there's just a difference in in that, when you build a hockey rink, it is a hockey rink, and that's what it's used for. And if we're talking in an enclosed second sheet of ice, you know, that's a pretty significant facility in comparison to a field with a fence, so.
Very significant, yeah. Right. Okay.
One thing, can I add a comment to that though?
Well, please.
If we were to add a second sheet, um, we would increase our public programming for open skate, for lessons, figure skating, that sort of thing too.
Curling, could happen.
Hopefully. So it wouldn't be strictly hockey. Right now, we're pretty much strictly hockey because of the the size of our associations and the high school and that sort of thing. But hopefully, if we have a second, we would add more public. But yeah, they can't just go on at any time of the day, any ti- I mean. If they have a membership, they would have it for free, if not, they would have to pay to use it, so.
Would you build a little apartment for Barrick in there? Hang out there.
When I was a kid, there was three hockey rinks in town. Huber Park, Holmes Park, and Lions Park. Three. Now we're down to one. The difference is they were all outside when I was a kid. And all the old folks would play after us kids at Huber Park, and everybody'd sit on a hill watching the VFW take on the American Legion and broomball. Or the fire fire department against uh cops or whoever. It's all broomball, 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 broomball. And uh, it was a good time, you know, it it, we've, we've come to a society of convenience. They wanna play, they just don't wanna play, you know, they really wanna play, but not really wanna play. Because if it's not indoors with all these creature comforts, then I don't wanna play no more. So it's, times have changed since years ago, and when you really wanted to play, you played.
I have to completely disagree with you on that because.
That's what it was.
Well, no, I I, that's the way it wor- but that doesn't work now. The the, our winters don't work that way now. I mean, we've had, the year before last, was it, that we had ice for eight weeks? Um, and last winter, we had, I mean, it it just isn't there. It would be, we would, that would solve our problems and save millions of dollars. Um, and last winter we had, I mean, it, it just isn't there. It would be, we would, that would solve our problems and save millions of dollars in Minnesota if we had.
Bad winters back then too. You know, we had bad winters where you couldn't get in the ice and it was all slush and then you've got the winters where it's really too cold to go outside.
Exactly, and we, I think we need a little consistency in order to have programs and, and those kinds of things to our, Council, why are you sorry about that?
Uh, no, uh, I totally agree with you. I think you also, I'll bring up the thing about tournaments too. You mentioned broomball and, um, we don't have the winters that have been supporting the ice outside. Which is unfortunate because how can you get a program together that's not, not a guarantee that it's even gonna happen? So you got the hockey tournament possibilities again and more availability for renting that space and, uh, pearling, broomball. There is a lot of different opportunities that could happen.
Back then, we had the same problem. We had the same programming on slush and it just didn't work out and that's just the way life happened to be. People realized that mother nature is the way she is. Now it's convenience.
But there is technology today where you can have an outdoor rink that's refrigerated type thing. I don't know a whole lot about it, but I think Eden Prairie has it or.
Or fair ice.
Minneapolis.
In Minneapolis, so you don't have the expense of a total indoor field rink, but you have the capabilities of controlling the ice when it warms up and so on. So it's a cheaper alternative without going back to the slush, without going to the indoor facility. And maybe we look at putting some hoc- hockey rink in, that would be that way. Check on the cost and.
I don't think it's an issue of convenience. I think it's a competitive issue is more what it is. Everyone who wants their kid to be the next pro athlete for that sport and they're starting them younger and younger and younger. And that's what's happening and that's what they want. Is that time to do that?
And are the kids any happier?
What?
And are the kids any happier? That's another discussion.
That's a whole different thing.
Yeah, as, as well as would be, you know, the fact that broomball is, and to a lesser extent, you know, adult softball is just something to do before you go to the bar and drink. Maybe, maybe we could free up some fields if we replaced it with paddleball leagues, you know, so they have something to do before they go to the bar and drink.
There you go. Um, all right, Jamie, is there any other specific direction or thoughts you want on what you've spoken about so far?
Not about what we've spoken on so far, no. We just wanted to bring it to the council's attention that these have been the discussions. So as they come forward, you're not, like, we already brought the lights forward, but as we come forward with some other things with our CIP that you're not blindsided, that you're just kept up to speed on. What the discussions have been and, um, what the presentations from the associations have been.
All right, beautiful. Item, uh, three B, proposed public indoor, oh, sorry, we've got the rest of this one to go yet. I apologize.
The tennis.
Yep.
Is it park development or?
Yeah, don't we?
Yeah, they were all in one memo, memo, the, the tennis facility and the parcel seventy-five were all in the one memo as park development. They're just broken down as discussion items on your agenda. Uh, the, to talk a little bit about the tennis association. Now, this is something that, um, Ms. Mars and Mr. Hill can talk about more specifically and what the direction was from the park board as they move forward and come back. Um, but they came with, this is something that they're, they've been kinda rumbling about for maybe the last four or five years. As looking at an indoor tennis facility somewhere. Um, I put in your packet, it's their PowerPoint, which I unfortunately don't have as a PowerPoint in any of our files. This was sent to us as their handout, um, with them. Uh, so if you read through it, basically they came to the park board with a proposal to potentially use Shutrup Park, this was their original proposal, uh, kinda lays it out. But to potentially use the usable space on Shutrup Park for an eight-court indoor tennis facility. Um, so that would be this section right here. Um, during the park board meeting when they gave their presentation and they did the PowerPoint, they had a nice three D image going on. They have a very organized association right now with a lot of different expertise on their association board. Where they have, um, been researching this for a number of years on, um, how they can build this facility one hundred percent with their own funding. How they can run the facility one hundred percent by themselves and keep it successful. Um, and all that they would be asking from the city would be the use of the land either through a minimal lease or an agreement of some sort. And that's yet to be determined if this is something that, um, is supported as far as moving forward. So this, right, this item was their first one. What they did in their proposal, uh, which is, was in your packet, it's a little bit more, I've got a better picture of it. Right here, um. This was using the whole site. We've asked them to potentially move it over so that we could use some of the site as our own usage too. To put like a playground, a picnic shelter, that sort of thing. So this is, um, putting this facility as far west as possible, so it's putting it over in this corner. Because we know that, one item we know here that won't work is twenty-one comes through here, we have an access on to Shutrup parcel over here. And we are one hundred percent positive, we can't get another access off of sixteen there. So that's why we have asked them to move the whole thing to the west. Uh, we don't even know if we can get the two access, but we have the one and that, this is just for illustration purposes. But, so we still have about three acres over to the east here that they're not going, that they wouldn't be proposing their facility on. Um, which we could possibly put one turf field there, a picnic shelter, um, playground, that sort of thing and tie in. But overall, so this would be the indoor facility, would be this part right here, they are eight courts indoor. Um, they would have the seating on this side and then in there would be what they've showed us from their proposal was a two-story, um, building in the front. That would include a, a small pro shop, um, some meeting rooms, potential computer lab, um, like a little snack bar, that sort of thing. What they are, uh, modeling their proposal off of is the Fred Wells Tennis Center over by the airport on, um, um, what's, I'm sorry, the military.
Ports Nelling.
Ports Nelling, sorry, totally mind blank. Um, so there's a very successful facility there. That's an indoor tennis facility that is programmed, uh, seven days a week. Three hundred and sixty, pretty much three hundred and sixty-five days a year with adult, senior, youth, women's leagues, co-rec leagues, uh, co-ed leagues, men's leagues, um, tennis. And they've also tied in, they've been very successful in their youth development portion where they actually bus teens from the local schools to this tennis facility. They teach them tennis as well, but then the, some of the seniors do the volunteering and they have the computer lab where they help with after-school programming, that sort of thing. Um, it's something that they would like to potentially work into this, to put that educational component with it. They've talked to the school, I think the school's, um, computer section that they, or the computer programming that they have there. Um, to see about working with them on doing some of the computer development and the after-school tutoring. So they wanna make it into a programming center. It's not all about tennis, but when they do their presentation, which they will bring to the city council, as they did to the park board. They'll talk about tennis as being a lifelong sport. It's not that age-specific youth program. This is a sport that people do from the time they're younger up into their nineties. The tennis, US Tennis Association, um, has already started those upper leagues. So this would be a developmental facility. It's the only one that they, we would have in the surrounding area. There's not many like it, even in the country. Um, but the ones that have been built, which they have brought forward, um, have been successful. It's about a five million dollar facility to construct. Um, and then it would have the operational costs. These outdoor facilities, these are youth, small-sided, um, outdoor facilities. That we actually do paint youth field, youth lines on the, the stands, tennis courts that they use now for those smaller groups. Uh, and then these would be outdoor courts that they would light. So we would, we don't right now have any lit court, lit courts in the city. The ones we did have were at the middle school, which were just taken out. Um, so these would be lit tennis facilities. This is something that's maybe up for discussion too. We're supposed to be putting two tennis courts at the Riverside Fields Park, which is just down to the east of this. If this is something that we've potentially moved forward with, is that a good use of that space as we move through this as well? So what the, the, the tennis association did, they did a brief discussion with the park board, uh, when we had them come and do their pitch of their usage, their growth, their needs. Then the park board scheduled a work session specifically just with the tennis association on May twenty-first before our regular meeting. And they came forward with the PowerPoint that you have in your packet, this layout that's to the west. And then, um, more of a timeline, I believe I put these all in your packets as well, but a timeline for what they want to do. Um, right now, they're just trying to feel the city out of whether or not this is even a potential. So they started with the park board. Um, they are starting with a market study, which they have been working with US Tennis Association. They had someone here to present with them. They have gotten these, if you can see how large, I don't know which camera puts on, but how large this, um, business plan is for a recreation department in Oregon. Um, this is what they're planning to put together for this facility and they're modeling it off of these other facilities that have been successful. They've gotten all the financials and all of the, um, workings of the Fred Wells Tennis Facility, which they've been very open with giving the tennis association. I haven't received any of those numbers yet from the tennis association, but they were gonna get those to us to review as well. Um, but they were looking at trying, uh, you know, a timeline of working on it this year to get their business plan in order. Right now, they are planning to do it internally as far as making sure that they feel it can work with the expertise that they have on their board. That they have the marketing, the financial and, um, the planning, programming, they're doing demographic studies. They're having a lot of help from the US Tennis Association. They plan on doing that, that analysis through the fall of this year. And then if they find that they think it could be successful still from what they preliminarily put together, then they would come back to the park board to present that. Of is this something that the park board would be willing to recommend to the city council as a possible potential use? Um, at that point, the city ca- will be brought to the city council where they would give you all of that information, put their business plan out in front of you. And ask you to comment on that as well. Um, from our discussions, we've told them that they need to have in their business plan, what if this fails? Okay, you're gonna build it, what if it fails? What do we do with the facility that's now on city land? Where are the fundings coming from? Um, replacement costs of the facility down the line, that sort of thing. They should have in their business plan that they bring forward. Um, if the city council is on board that saying, yes, we would like to hear more about this and the potential moving forward, that we are, you know, Shutrup is a potential site for that. Then they would actually hire a consultant that they would pay for to do specifically this, that other cities have done. To, to vet it more, to make sure that their numbers are correct, that it's not a pipe dream and bring that forward to the city council. Again, saying, this is where we're at, this is the funds we can, and then getting permission to go ahead with the fundraising campaign. So they haven't done any fundraising as of yet. They're putting their plan in place for the fundraising plan. Um, but they won't do any fundraising until they've got the backing from the city that we are open to the potential use of Shutrup Park. The reason why they have picked Shutrup Park, I mentioned earlier, was the location. They've done a study with how many USTA members there are within a so ma- so many mile radius. And I believe there's close to five thousand.
Something like that.
I can get the exact number for you from our notes from that meeting. Um, but tennis is a, a facility that people will travel to. And right now, the private, most courts are, are filled, but the private organizations that offer tennis, such as the lifetimes, um, are also filled. Very hard to get onto, but they're very costly, so you have to usually pay for a tennis court on top of your membership. It doesn't usually come with your membership. Um, and then they have, so they'll give all those numbers as to what, why they would not be competing with an indoor or a lifetime fitness. Uh, what they would be bringing to benefits and what other facilities of this type have done to benefit their communities. Um. I lost my train of thought. But, oh, they, if they, if we can't, if they can't use Shutrup, right now they do not have another site as a backup site to potentially pursue. They were thinking of possibly pursuing the, uh, what's slated for commercial property to the west of the Jackson School from the school district. Um, but as of right now, they would have to purchase that land, uh, at a, a pri- if they have to purchase land, it's not something that they think they can financially do. Plus that land is not flat. It's pretty, it need, it would need quite a bit of grading work to get anything, so there'd be more work as far as in the construction where Shutrup is flat. So that's the only site that they've brought forward at this site as a potential. So if the city's not on board with the potential of having it at this site for that use, um, that may be something that they would then, you know, end up going back to the drawing boards and put off. Until they have a different location, so.
Was it, was it, was it discussed as purchasing part, part of the site or leasing part of the site?
Dislating.
Right now, they are proposing to lease the site from the city for a very minimal amount.
Okay, and city get any kind of exclusive use of any of the facility or?
That has, that was a question the park board asked. If you wanna, do you wanna talk about that a little bit? What was asked?
I think we asked about, uh, if we'd be able to set up city-run lessons. That's about the extent.
And meeting space, I think.
And meeting space, that's correct, I forgot.
Uh, it seems to me that if they're gonna make this kind of investment on this type of property, it's, it's almost permanent. And we've got a pretty big investment on that property and a lot of needs in town.
Yep. They were, from what I gathered, they were very open to, to working and, uh, keep in mind that the tennis association is one of our youth affiliated associations now. So we do our programming with them and they, they pay the city for use of the facilities. That would continue. Um, even though they have their own facility, they would still be affiliated with us, but they were open to doing joint programming, allowing usage of space. Doing some senior and teen programming, um, out of there as well if that's, cause that's part of the components that they wanted to tie in.
How many, uh, tennis courts do we have in town? Full size?
City-owned or total?
City-owned or school? I guess the number doesn't really matter, but if, if, what I'm getting at is if this, if this, something like this happened, even if it was half the size. Would we be able to remove ours or the schools and free up that space for another use?
Yes, currently for our CI, what our comp plan called for of the number of tennis courts that, that the city would need by twenty thirty. We've reached that, that amount with the high school putting in ten courts when they built the new high school. So technically, we don't need any further. So if you go off of those numbers, yes, potentially if they have five outdoor, the three at Lion- or the four that we have at Lions. Could be taken away to still have our total number that we would need to meet those numbers of twenty thirty.
But could that space then be used for something else? It's not big enough for a ball field.
Yeah, we'd have to look at what the use would be, um, potentially.
Other questions? General field, Council Sherman?
Well, I think you hit on what my primary concerns would be when you were discussing, um, what happens if it fails and, um, what do we do with it then? And what's the contingency around that, I think is a really big concern. Um, I'd also be interested in seeing some pretty detailed numbers in terms of operational costs and how they plan on funding and managing the operational costs. It's one thing to build something, but then to run it year after year after year is where obviously the biggest expense comes, comes in.
Yep.
Not that I'm saying it's easy to raise five million and build a building, cause it's not, but, but to run it for thirty years, that's a really big expense, right?
Right.
And in twenty years when the roof needs to be replaced.
Correct.
And I think, I think we did bring up all those points. It's something we needed to bring back. Exit strategy was the big thing, what's gonna happen if it fails. And I think the other thing that I brought up was, I just wanna see some kind of guarantee of, of how they're gonna pay for it. I mean, it sounded like they could get the money, but then they started talking fundraising, so I just wanted to see some, some kind of guarantee that they were gonna be able to build it.
Yeah, my biggest concern is we've got a pretty good money investment in this property and to basically lease it to somebody for a hundred years at a buck a year or something is, I'm not interested in that.
So you're saying you're not interested in this proposal?
Well, if that's what the proposal is, I don't know what the proposal is. I, I'm not willing to lease this property to them for a buck a year, no.
Okay.
I think when they come back with their proposal, they'll bring back all the benefits of what it's bringing to the city as a community facility. Because it won't be a pri- what they're proposing is not a private facility. It would be a public, that they, public facility that they would run what it would bring to the city of Shakopee as if. But they would run it versus the city paying the operational costs to run it. Um, so we would wait, we, they would give that information as an argument to what they're asking, I think, for the lease and the use of the land.
Right.
I guess, do they say that there's any other examples where in a similar situation where the city owned the land and they're leasing it from the city somewhere else and what the benefits are? Or do they have any other examples that they can draw upon?
I don't think they had.
I, well, I believe they had one in a different state. Was it, um, I can get you that information that, they had talked about one in, that was just built in.
In California?
California and in Virginia or Ohio.
Out, out east.
Yeah, I, I can find that out. I do believe. Yeah. I, I can find that out, I do believe that one was recently constructed.
Be interested to hear how the city's view is on that after it's been established and how it, how it's working for them.
All right, anything else?
I think it's intriguing, it's a public-private partnership that it's, it's, I, of course, you'd have to see the numbers and what the proposals are, of course, first, but it's a use, it's a, it's a park recreation use and, uh, it's interesting. It may be the way things go in the future. I'd be interested in knowing how that building is owned and who owns it and wanted some of the fallback positions.
All right. Anybody else? All right, next item, parcel seventy-five. Where's Eric Krieger at? We need him.
Well, the park board, um, began discussing parcel seventy-five in concept last year in two thousand and eleven when the city knew that they were very close to obtaining parcel seventy-five as city property. As you recall, we received parcel seventy-five as a three-way swap when Conroe Twenty-One was, um, constructed and, um, when it was conveyed to the city, it was to be still used for public purposes. Um, and then the city had planned to put the third fire station on this site. Uh, one of the, the concepts that you may have saw when this three-way was coming through was just the overview with an idea of a potential site for the fire station up front. So this was a, a very preliminary that we could get a fire station there. Looking back at, we've always had the South Bridge area park development, which includes parcel seventy-five and the, um, parkland that was given to us with the South Bridge development. On our CIP, however, as you can see again, it's, oops, sorry, it's under future unfunded. And that one million was to do all of parcel seventy-five and then some of the other areas within South Bridge that don't currently have park or active use. They're really, right now, just prairie land or under power lines. They're odd shaped, there's not a large parkland other than parcel seventy-five. So the idea, um, was when South Bridge Development came in, after going through this further, uh, was there was a whole South Bridge Community Dean Lake area oops master plan. So this is one of the plans that, as we've constructed parks and put in trails and done improvements and the association has done improvements, have been off of this master plan, so, um, this park over here has been developed, that's our Hamlet Park. This, um, where is it? I believe it's this park right here is the Savannah Oaks Park that we currently have. And then there's some green space that the association maintains to keep it a green space, even though it's city parkland. Um, and then we did, a few years ago, try to put the trail in that connects to the trail that goes behind the elementary school site. Through these neighbors, it was stopped through the neighborhood park planning process and it was not moved forward because of the, what the neighborhood impacted. We still have the easement and the trail easement, we still have plans to put the trail there, um, however, we haven't moved forward on it since then. So with it, um, if you s- if we zoom in on parcel seventy-five, uh, kind of a concept plan for it, this was before we had the parcel, it was still in Minnet, um, was to put the al- well, the main location for the third fire station was way over here. I believe now there is a spuck building there, um, or some sort of a utility item there. Um, here was the alternative site over on the eastern side of the, the parcel. There is now an overhead or a high
Our line?
Utility pole, yes, the power line tripod pole there is, is currently right there, so this would have to be adjacent. Then you saw, then the other thing that it could go right here. But also in this plan was a tennis court, so off-street parking, an amphitheater, um, just a regular grass playfield, so it would be not a, not a skinned infield, it would be just the backstop. So that was all planned here with this trail going through it to keep it more of a nature area. This was done back in two thousand and one, I believe, or two thousand, two thousand and one, yes. As a, just a general concept with some of the other things that go through here. So last year, when the park board discussed it and knew that we were getting it, there was some discussion on what it could be used for. Do we stick to this plan that was brought forward in two thousand and one? We know it's a natural area, that was the main focus of keeping it natural as much as we could. Um, there's been, over the years, discussion on where to put a dog park in town. We've gone through many different sites and no site has seemed to work to, to date on whether or not we can have the land or the, the neighbors wouldn't allow it, or the cost if we'd have to buy, purchase land, the potential, that, it just hasn't worked out. So one of the ideas when discussed with the park board last year was, um, could a potential dog park go on this site? Because the area underneath the, the high wire lines is fairly open, it's already been disturbed when the lines, power lines went in. It's a, could have a wooded site to it. Through our dog park discussions over the years with the dog park group, it was desired in most cases to have a, a, something bigger than a five acre park somewhere, so that people could potentially exercise when they go with their dogs, that it's not just an open field, that they could go, because there's different types of dog owners who some like to go to one spot and just let their dogs play around, some like to actually meander through the site and five acres seemed to be the magic number to make it large enough that it was considered not just a, a small area. This was something that the park board then told staff to just look at what the uses could be under the power line. We contacted XL Energy to do that and then, um, Mr. Henderson and our par- Public Works Department put together just a concept plan of laying it out of potentially what, how we could lay this site out. This is fairly to scale with his programming, however, this was just a concept plan that got brought forward to the park board at the last meeting. It's a little under a five acre, we can extend it any which way that we want to. We did keep out this area because this one high wire pole is up on a berm, but we could potentially include that to make it that five acres. Right now, what we have on here is a four point seven five acre park. As you see, this land up here is five acres that Minnet decided to keep as part of their future potential right-of-way needs, their overflow. They did keep that area. So this includes the off-street parking, we would keep the, the trees intact that are behind these houses, which right now are a very good screen for, from the houses to the park. We would continue, keep the main part of the park as natural as possible with some trails through the areas that already have trails through them. And then the, the fence, dog park would need to be fenced in, we need to have a pass-through gate is a requirement. But the type of fencing is open, it doesn't have to be chain link, it can be the large chicken wire. Um, if you go out to the large dog park that they just put in in Carver County, it's the, like, six-inch square wire with wooden posts. So you can, funding and the type of materials you use is basically to our discretion, as long as it keeps the dogs in. So we would have trails within the dog park, um, some possible benches. What, the reason why we put it over to the west, like I said, is because the, it's, most of it would be under the power lines, which was already disturbed. Then we do have some, there's a lot of invasive species out on parcel seventy-five where we'd have to take out the buckthorn honeysuckle, um, and which would open up some of these corridor areas for the fence and for the, the trails. The other part of this site, though, that when we had the joint meeting between the EAC and the park board, we wanted to have them together is because this parcel has had a vegetation management plan that was put together, um, by city staff, Minnet staff, Department of Natural Resources staff, uh, back in two thousand and five, I'm not sure if, if the council has seen this recently, um, or just in two thousand and five, but it lays out what is potentially on this site. It is a, one of the known oak savannas in the area. Um, it contains some large bur oak trees, um, it also contains some native prairie grasses. Uh, most of those were found on the front part of the parcel, so that was discussed. It contains two species, animal species that are protected or of concern and that is a, um, prairie mouse and the bull snake that are out there. So that's what the EAC was concerned with, they were concerned with any developments on the site because of the native species that are here, the animals that are on it, we have some corridors that would lead to other natural areas, however, if we talk about flow of habitat, it's pretty much isolated here without having to cross one sixty-nine or going through the residential. So that's something to think about. Through the discussions and through a site visit that we did with both org- with both boards and commissions, we walked it, the native prayers, like I said, were found here, not a lot found underneath the power lines because of the fact it's been disturbed. And then we do have the natural pathways where we could de- determine whether or not we would put paved, wood-chipped gravel trails to keep the min- you know, the impact down. The fire station was potentially put over to the far east. This was put here because when we walked the site, I walked it with Jim Henderson and Bill Egan from our Public Works Department. All the utilities to parcel seventy-five are stubbed in right at this curb cutout. And so they laid it out so that it would be similar to our current fire station, where you drive in here, you drive right through the bays and out. When I talked with the fire chief, he, we used the square footage of the new one that was just built. Um, he said this one poten- could potentially be smaller depending upon what, what future discussions are, but just for our planning purposes, we used the square footage, which I think is eleven thousand square feet or twelve thousand square feet. And then it's always been discussion of putting an emergency access from this cul-de-sac, because right now, there's only one way in and one way out of this townhouse development over here. So we would, this would be just an emergency access only, it would not be a public street, and that's up for discussion, but that would allow our, our emergency personnel to get in and out here. But we would put the bollards so that people could not drive through here and come through our fire station parking lot. We would put a public parking lot over to the west because we don't wanna put, as we discussed at Lions Park, a public parking lot with our fire station parking lot, just for safety purposes, we don't wanna mix the two. Having the fire station over on this east side would impact minimal amount of the prairie and we would have to take out some trees over here, but it would still impact the trees to a minimal amount. Through our discussion from both, um, it was passed unanimously to recommend this concept plan to the city council. However, then it was, um, I think it was a six to vi- five vote to have an environmental assessment done on what this plan would impact the site, both the native species and the animals that are out there. The, one, two things that were changed from the plan that's here that would be brought forward to city council was to move this hockey rink off of this north side and to po- potentially move it to the south side, where we might be able to put it underneath power lines and to reduce the size of this parking lot, or even put it a little bit over to the west, where this is all still parkland, these trees are, um, to reduce the minimal, or to reduce the impact on the prairie. So that would be brought forward, um, for a potential discuss- or, right now, it's discussion on what your thoughts are on it, but for approval. The EAC will be discussing the quotes that we received for two environmental impact studies tomorrow. I don't have those quotes with me tonight, um, so I can't tell you what they are. But right now, their idea was just to look at the quotes to see if it's something that we can fund out of our natural resources operating budget that I have funded for this year. If we can't, they would not, they would determine whether or not to move forward with it. Like I said, it was a split six to five to go forward with the EIS, so five members of the park board or, or EAC were not in favor of doing the study. They just wanted to move forward with this concept. This is the only concept that staff did bring forward to them, based on our discussions from two thousand and eleven of the site and the uses. We had the other, uh, two thousand and one plan, staff can go back with, with more concept plans if you would like to out of this discussion. Another thing, before we do any of this development, we go through the park planning process and we'd have the neighborhood meetings and get their input and that sort of thing as well. But this is a concept that we'd like discussed.
Sorry, I was talking, uh, Councilman Sherman?
It's consistent with the two thousand and one plan, except the trails were natural trails, either gravel or, uh, wood chip in the old one plan, and I think they had some kind of kiosk thing set up on some of these trails to point out what you're looking at.
Yep, and I th- we would still, uh, plan to put that here in the middle where there's an open area to talk about the native.
There it is.
It's in there.
We stood there. We imagined school kids standing there.
So it's pretty, it's pretty consistent. And it's, and it's not that I'm opposed to, uh, passive uses, because this is something we already have. It's, I don't think we should invest in large future passive uses with the county focusing on that for us.
Questions? Direction, comments, thoughts?
Question?
Oh, sorry, Councilman Sherman?
Proposed funding source, is that the park reserve fund or?
Yes, um, one of the, the items that we would wanna do, if this is something we wanna move forward with, is to, to re-energize our dog park group, because when we had that group intact, they were very adamant that they could come up with some donation or even in-kind to help put in the fence and stuff like that. Um, we would wanna resurrect them, because on our park reserve CIP, as you'll see, when we talk about that, I do, I think, have twenty thousand dollars for donations, which is, would come from that group. Um, but the, the rest of it would come from the park reserve is what would be the potential funding.
And then timing, desired timing around that?
I have it on for twenty thirteen, um, but it can be whatever our plans are, but.
This fall?
We could, I mean, we have the funding in the park reserve to do it at any time, um, twenty thirteen was the plan. We would also, like I said, Mr. Egan has been involved with the plans, this know that it's there. Um, but we would have to look at our staffing, what our maintenance would be of it and bring that all forward with the proposal of actually constructing it.
Well, you need the results, first you need the results of the EIS, that's the first thing you need.
Yes.
If they do an EIS.
Right, well, it sounds like it's a six to five vote.
To get quotes, I think.
To get quotes, yep, and then we'll take it, the EAC.
Would we be selling permits or license or something to use this facility?
We haven't discussed that, we, it's a potential.
Park board discussion to have?
Yep, that could be a park board.
Councilwoman Wang?
I, I think it's a great idea, there, you know, I'm a cat guy, but there is a lot, a lot of people, uh, with dogs, especially walking, uh, South Bridge, I think every house had a dog, so that's a, I think, and I know a lot of people that just flock to these dog parks, whether in Minneapolis or other places. It's a great social networking kind of place for the dog culture that we have. And, uh, it's, and I've been on the site too, it's a, it's a beautiful natural site and I think it should be, uh, exposed to, to people to come and look at it and use it.
Um, I was on the dog, oh, I'm sorry, Mark.
I just, I think there was a suggestion made at the time that we got the Burma High, uh, donation, it's three and a quarter acres of land, basically across from Burger King on First Avenue. It related to Jamie, that obviously is much smaller than the five acre thing that the dog park group was looking for. And it does have no shade at this point, but if we run into other issues as far as environmental or that sort of thing, it's, yeah, an option to at least consider, but it's not perfect and I don't think any of the sites that we have will be perfect in every way.
What I was gonna say was that when, uh, the group was meeting, the twenty thousand, if I recall, was mostly the group putting in all the, doing all the work, so putting in the fence themselves and, and cutting trees down and whatever needed to get done, was a lot of what that is, and I think that we could get, if we put the word out this weekend, we could get a hundred people out in South Bridge to go and.
Okay, but if I can caution, the league might have a few things to say about our insurance if you do that.
Well, we've done community projects before with people doing things.
Tree removal and.
Yeah, we're not cutting down trees. We're pulling out, yeah, we're pulling out buckthorn.
We are regulated by factors outside of what the private sector has to look at. And, and it is, and it is, is a big concern if you're looking at a all volunteer effort that there has to be some consideration.
Right. Absolutely. So are you saying that we can't do a volunteer effort for things or?
No, I'm saying there are some very specific details you have to be aware of.
Perfect.
Of course.
So that was a big part of where that, that came from was a lot of the labor for getting it done. And, um, I think this is great and will make a lot of people out in South Bridge very, very happy, esp- uh, throughout the entire town very happy, but especially on South Bridge, so I think that's good.
Ah, I won't say it.
What was that?
I won't say it.
Don't ask.
It might make other people besides South Bridge who don't have dogs and are cat people, that don't want dogs in their yards, to maybe have folks a, an option to run a dog.
Walk your cat.
Yeah.
My cat walks on leash.
We need a cat option.
So you bring your cat.
The tree.
All right, anything specific you need from us on that, Jamie?
No, just that this will be coming forward then to city council. Um, but we would, we'll put together more of the actual costs of the fencing with the distances and, and that sort of thing to bring forward and, um, have that discussion of whether or not we do permits and potential funding.
When will it be coming to council?
Well, the EA, the EIS quotes go to, go to park board or, um, EAC tomorrow. So that will come forward first if they choose to go through it, that, that we would have that done. Um, and then they would want to see the results, so I wouldn't bring it back to that.
Uh, Mayor, we should, if, we should probably have the park board look at some kind of policy for a dog park too. Uh, I would assume that the dogs entering would have to be up to date on the rabies shots and vaccines and so on and so forth and a dog tag and.
Registering.
Yeah.
Right. And that was one other thing that we talked about, which I don't know if you guys talked about with the park board, was that we have dog, I don't know what you call them, permits or licenses in check, whatever we.
Mm-hmm. You have to license your pets.
Which is not like three of those, of people who actually use those. And one thing we talked about was using part of that money to fund.
Oh.
Dog park stuff is that if people were going to be using it, they had to have a, the dog license in the city.
We're gonna have somebody, an employee.
Basically, it's.
Don't try standing there.
It goes on the general fund now, so what you're doing is shifting, so slightly the fees to tax support of it, but that's something you do, maybe look at a surcharge for folks that want to help support the dog park. I mean, there's something that might be able to be done.
Right.
There will be people from other cities using it.
Exactly.
I just don't know where the liability, if, if any, falls, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, but if, uh, the city has a dog park and some dog goes in there and bites somebody or somebody else's animal or whatever and it's got rabies, do we have any exposure here?
Oh, yeah, there's a specialty in the league's insurance policies for these kind of sites specifically.
So. All right, so you guys get to have a good discussion on that.
All right, uh, item D, review of twenty twelve to twenty sixteen park reserve fund and CIP.
This was put on your agenda to tie into our previous discussions of where these projects would fit in, um, on our plan, what the costs would potentially be, just to give you an idea. This would al- this also comes forward to you during the budget process, so you're just getting a, a preview of it. Um, that the, I've organized it to give you a better idea of what would come in each year. Um, I have two thousand and twelve on as what we had planned for this year, um, and then I did change some things around, but the Green Meadows, um, shelter is planned to be constructed this year, this fall. Uh, we did get that mu- small DNR grant of sixteen thousand towards that construction, so that was allocated for that. Um, and then the lighting of the two fields that you approved a few meetings ago, um, with the donations. And I did break out the sixty thousand that we would get this year and then the twenty thousand we'd get over the next two years. So that is what we have planned for two thousand and twelve. Um, the Riverside Fields Park that we were planning to build this year, that you, um, rejected the two bids that we got in because they were well over budget, uh, we are gonna rebid that early next year per your direction. And everything with that was discussed to remain the same as far as us doing the, um, um, construction administration. Now, we definitely, we still have to look at our schedule for next year to see if that's still within our plans. Um, but as we just, as we move forward with it from rejecting it this year and moving, that's the plan. If we can't fit it into our own internal services, then I would come back to city council for further funding to do construction administration for that park. Um, but I moved it forward as we had it budgeted for this year. What I did tie into that, if you see, is, um, the Riverside Fields Park, it was six forty, now you see seven seventy, and that's because we had planned on the previous years, park reserve was to build that shelter, um, next year, uh, the year after the park was built. We had applied for the grant, council gave the approval to apply for the grant through the DNR for that shelter as well. Um, I did get notice actually a week ago, um, that we did not get any funding for this shelter. So if we do build the Riverside Fields Shelter with the park construction now, because the park construction got pushed back a year, um, the cost would be one hundred percent out of our park reserve allocated here.
What's the one ninety for twenty sixteen?
That is for the, um, site, potential site to the west that is not as currently under private ownership. But if we were to take on some parkland there, that would help develop that.
All right.
And that, as we discussed when we were develop- or doing the concept plan for Riverside Fields, was a future of yet to be determined whether we would even take parkland, um, or just take the cash, so I did allocate some there. And then, um, we have for the thirty thousand for the parking lot, uh, we had talked about this when our, our bids came in for Green Meadows Park last year. Um, they had come in a little bit higher, so to cut back some of the costs, we had talked about areas to reduce, to get within the budget. One of the areas was the parking lot, we only built park, part of the parking lot with the park, with plans that we would build the other parking lot as part of a bigger project, bigger paving project in the city. Um, if it fits in when the fields were ready, then they would be playable next year. That we didn't do it right away because the fields aren't playable for two years, so that is the plan there. Um, that can be done if we have another projects to, to, um, couple it with or it can be moved out to when we can do it more co- most cost effectively. But that was the plan to extend that parking lot, uh, when the park was in full, fully usable. Then as you see, I have the forty-four thousand for the, just the development of the off-leash dog park area. Uh, that was based on previous funding, um, budgeting. We would definitely update that as we bring this forward and then this would be that the dog park group has resurrected with some donations. Um, then I do have for twenty thirteen, the possibility of that, of developing that joint site, the high school site jointly with the city council. Right now I put in the three hundred and fifty would be what we consider the total cost of development. I just put that in, um, for a placeholder at this point. That, that's the prices we got from, um, what it would cost to develop the fields if we were to pay a hundred percent for them. Now hopefully that would be less if we're doing it in partnership with the school. Um, but I wanted to put that in there because we haven't had that discussion yet with the school district. And typically on a city facility, um, as with Tapa Park, the city takes on the long-term expenses. We do the maintenance, we take on the, um, we pay all the utility costs, electrical, that sort of thing. On a school site, they do the same. We, we do the mowing typically, or the, the striping typically, the school district still does the mowing of the site. They pay for all the lighting costs. Um, so if they're going to take on the long-term costs of, of development, that may be that they give the land and take on those costs and we would have to build them. So that's still up for discussion, simply a placeholder at this time. Um, the two hundred is what we had hoped they would give towards the project to develop it. And then seventy-five thousand is to, um, this was on there last year, we don't have any specific plans to do it right now. Um, and we haven't, we've briefly discussed it with, in the past with Public Works, so it would be a small open air shelter at Huber Park. Um, but depending upon their workload and their schedules, that is not something that we've really talked seriously about or done any grants for or anything like that. Um, just as a idea that we would like to put a shelter, an open air picnic shelter there. Um, it would be just like Memorial Park shelters and, you know, enclosed area, just a, an overhead area. So that's twenty thirteen. Um, going into twenty fourteen, we look at, um, possible, uh, trail construction or we'll go back to parcel seventy-five, that would be the rest of it. So the, um, paved trails, the finishing the parking lot, that may be something we have to move into if we put the dog park there, moving it up. So I still have to do a little bit of cost tweaking there. But it would be to build out the rest of the parcel seventy-five area, um, and potentially putting the hockey rink on the south side and building that as well with some lighting. So that's that cost based on the past assess- or the past budgeting numbers for that. Um, the hundred thousand for Savannah Oaks was to connect the trail that goes out of Savannah Oaks Park through the wetlands to the South Bridge Parkway, something that Mr. Loney and I have talked about, trying to get on there, um, as a, just a trail connection. Um, it's been on there for the past couple of years, we've kind of keep moving it from here to here. Um, and then the two hundred and fifty is something I could possibly take off here because I do know this is strictly a funding by the DNR. Possi- we're hoping to replace the bridge in Memorial Park. I do believe Mr. Loney has it on a different plan as well, so we don't need it in two places. I'll probably take it off park reserve and he'll have it on his overall CIP, is that where you have it?
Yeah, we have it.
Um, and then the, um, looking at the revenues, from twenty fourteen out are projected revenues from future developments that we think might be coming in. Um, twenty twelve is pretty com- we have received the Sandmar, um, and we have received the, we haven't received the rest, but the Valakri crossing will be in front of you sometime this year. I believe it's going to planning commission shortly, or no, that one was already in front of you. So that one should be coming in and then there, um, are some other potential ones that are, staff are currently working on that are, are being in the process for this year as well. So the income or the funding sources for twenty twelve are, are fairly confident that those will be what we will get this year. Um, that is a preview of the park reserve.
Councilwoman Lehman.
Mayor, I'm looking at, I'll take an example, twenty twelve expenditures, one thirty, one twenty equals two fifty in my book. And then I go to the bottom and it says three ten. It's taking the donation and adding it as an expense, well, it's actually a revenue.
But it's up here in a revenue, so it's, it, when you take the top and the bottom, it's.
So if it's counted as a revenue up on top, why is it being an expense also?
You have to show the incoming revenue as a revenue.
Right.
You have to show the outlay of cash as an expense, you need to show both avenues of it for cash flow.
It's making the expense side look bad when it's not really gonna be something that's gonna be spent.
But it is an expense whether it's shown at, at some point the city has out cash outlay.
I'll, I'll tell you. Let me tell you how my mind works. If you wanna give me.
Uh-oh.
If you wanna.
Watching taxes.
If you wanna give me sixty thousand dollars and then convince, I'll con- I'll convince you that it cost me sixty thousand dollars to accept it from you. It don't work that way. So I understand where you're coming from, but it doesn't work that way.
Yeah, it has to.
We would use that amount as a re- cost, initial cost, so we can plug it in for future replacement costs.
Right, because.
It is, it is an asset, that's what the asset.
If we didn't record that as an expenditure, an asset, we wouldn't, we wouldn't get the audit. It's just a standard you have to do to allow for the asset to be applied to the force.
Well, when I, i- it's, it's not an object. It's not a light, it's not a field, it's not a structure, it's, it's nothing, it's not an object. It's just a number sitting there.
All right, we're gonna go to something else. What else you have, questions?
Well, it skews the whole thing, actually.
It doesn't skew anything, but that's fine.
From my perspective, it does.
Got it. What other questions?
Uh, that's the only question I have.
Anything else? All right, I think it's good, um, I need to, is, has Tristar, did they already pay? Their park dedication?
Uh, they don't have their building permits, we don't think they have.
Well, Tristar's one in Dean Lake.
Well, I didn't know if it was.
Yes.
That they've already fulfilled with the Dean Lake project, they've already fulfilled their park dedication.
What else?
We don't get any from them.
All right, um, last item discussion of is this existing park planning process policy. This is gonna be quick, right?
Yes, it should be quick. I just, we don't, since we don't have the, this basically came more from a discussion that the park board had at the last meeting of, uh, when we were talking about parcel seventy-five. Um, and the process that we went through with staff bringing back the concept plan for it. Um, and I wanted to just reaffirm with the park board and the city council both at the table that this is the park planning process policy that we want to go with. Um, there was a significant time between when this went to park board, recommended to city council in October. It was on your November first agenda. I had my baby, so it didn't come to you until March, so, um, there was a significant difference in the time that it was before them and before you. I just wanted to verify that, um, as we move forward with park development, that this is, is h- the process that you would like to work from. So, uh, the first one would be the parcel seventy-five is the concept plan that the park board. Since we, it's not a new parcel that we've taken on really, it's one that, yes, it's new to the city as ownership, but it's not new in concept. Um, we want to make sure we're on the same page with what our concept will be before we actually go and do any work with neighborhoods and, and stuff like that, so.
Councilwoman Lehman, are there concerns? Has anybody brought anything up?
I think one of the park board's concern was that I brought the one concept and then they had the old concept. That with the South Bridge area, because the South Bridge already had the two thousand and one plan, there was discussion between members of whether or not we should be bringing the concept forward or whether or not we should have taken it to the neighbors for them to design. It might.
I think that's what.
Correct?
It's pretty consistent with the old one plan. There's not a whole lot different.
Well, and according to this policy is that the city council and park board would agree on what the uses would be and then staff would bring the concepts forward prior to going to the neighborhood and still get input, input from the neighbors. So if there are significant changes, we would make those before we decide on the exact plan that we are building from.
Ryan.
I, I remember when we were kind of in our building, uh, Bonanza that we had, we got to, on the planning commission, to the point of almost having the, the developers put the parks in for us because they could do it cheaper, quicker and it's built there, ready for the housing to be there versus waiting and seeing what's happened and what happened from that point. How would that affect this process?
It's there. The top part is for, to be built with development, the bottom part is for parks to be built at a later date.
Okay, I mean, I'm looking at it, reading, when I was reading this, this more is not the developer doing it, the city's doing it. I'm talking the developer's gonna do it for us. So I just want to make sure that it follows the same process at that point, okay?
I think the number three, plan and build the park with the development could be done with whether we pay for it or they pay for it.
Okay. Both ways, okay.
And even if the developers do it with the project, I think they're still, they're still gonna have to do it to what the park board and the city council wants.
True. I agree with that, I'm just, wanna make sure.
Yeah, I think, are you using this process for parcel seventy-five?
Yes, I plan to, yeah.
Okay, so when it's done, if there are any issues, well, that's what number ten is for. I think we're good.
We'll do the dirty work.
That's what you're there for, Mark, you're good at it.
You know, it's, it's.
I thank you, all right.
It's not bad for disagreement. That, that, disagreement doesn't mean disrespect, it just means disagreement.
We agree to disagree.
I've been married for almost thirty years and there's no disrespect between me and my wife, but we disagree a lot.
That's why can we, we had that six to five vote the last meeting, we never had.
It's, it's not, it's not a bad thing, it's just disagreement.
It's a positive thing.
It's not, it's not dis- as long as it's not disrespectful. And I don't think that myself or this body is di- disrespectful in disagreement. But we do disagree.
You know, I think my wife and I disagree on is the degree to which I'm wrong.
But it's respectful, isn't it?
Oh, yeah. Any other questions? Anything else you need, Jamie?
No.
All right, item four, any other business? Seeing none, I will request a motion to adjourn to July seventeenth, twenty twelve. Councilwoman Lehman.
I'll move to adjourn to July seventeenth.
Senator Claeys, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, pass unanimously, we are adjourned at nine oh six until July seventeenth. Thank you, everybody, thanks park board for being here.